Okay, so meeting now called to order. First on the agenda, we've got a public hearing on a rezoning request. Lee County Board of Superior is willing to hold a public hearing on Tuesday, February 20, 2024 at 6:00 p.m., General District Court Room, Lee County Courthouse located in Jonesville, Virginia to solicit input on a rezoning request. I don't know if I can get these names out right, but if I don't, I apologize. Tanner Berger and Lethal Swart have applied to rezon property that is currently zoned B2 general business and R2 general residential to R2 general residential all-in. The property consists of approximately 0.5 acres of land that is located on the east side of Daydream Drive in Rose Hill, tax parcel number 47A-5-BK3, lots 16 through 18. Do we have anybody here on that behalf?
They want to get a report from Mr. Carter on that general planning commission before we come to the comments.
Okay.
As far as this request, the reason they needed to do this is their parcels are split in the act between the two zones. So their request is simply to zone it just to the residential zoning as far as what is currently zoned. You want me to go ahead and speak on the next public hearing as well?
No, just on this.
So as of right now, the way the mapping shows, their parcel is split just between the two current zones, and they're wanting to just be consistent, all are to residential.
Okay, so we just wanted to, um, I'm sorry. We just wanted to rezon it so we could put a trailer on there and maybe rent it out. That was the issue. We wanted to rezon the property so that we could put a trailer on it and rent it out. It's not currently, we aren't looking like Christie or anything right now.
Was there any, during your rounds here, was there any opposition, any, was there any?
Not at the hearing. We had received a phone call too, just concerned of what was potentially going in. Right now it is just a vacant lot. But I think people's concerns are more towards what it could be with the business. And once we explained to them they were trying to rezon it strictly to residential, at least any concerns from any of the phone calls.
So what was the zoning board's recommendation?
They recommend to approve the rezoning.
Okay. Any questions from any of the board members? Good. Thank you. Appreciate it. So, uh, open the floor for a motion to approve the...
Just, Chairman, I don't know if anybody else wanted to speak to it or not. I couldn't, I didn't look around to see if anybody else was motioning.
Justice, some of the zoning committees raised their hand.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure nobody else was here to address that.
Okay, if there's nobody else, uh, the floor is open to make a motion to approve the rezoning request.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Got a motion, got a second?
Second.
Motion has a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we've got the zoning text amendment. Lee County Board of Superior is holding a public hearing on Tuesday, February 20, 2024 at 6:00 p.m., General District Court Room, Lee County Courthouse located in Jonesville, Virginia to solicit input on a zoning text amendment request. The Lee County Planning Commission is requesting a zoning text amendment to allow multifamily, multifamily dwelling units limited to no more than eight units per structure by special use permit in the B1 Limited Business District and the B2 General Business District. Go on, speak on that.
Yes, please. Just to give a little clarity and background on why this text amendment came about, as far as in my realm as building official, if I have someone come to me with a structure, it's an existing structure already in the business district, the way the zoning ordinance is currently written, what can be used as residential use has to equal the square footage that is used for the business. For instance, if you had a thousand square foot business, you could also have a thousand square foot residential use. But in the case of some of our existing buildings, what the building code is trying to accomplish with the existing building code is to make things simpler, to reuse some of these existing structures as a way to combat law and other issues that we have. So potential, especially in some of District One, where you have the towns of Rose Hill and Ewing that are incorporated, that are within the county's limits instead of their own incorporated towns, our zoning ordinance will not allow for those structures to be used for a hundred percent of residential use. So the purpose in this is to allow us to use those structures in an area that kind of where we feel and see the need for housing. But also the reason the planning commission is asking for this to be by special use is in some instances, it may not be as agreeable with the positioning or the location of the lot. So by making them go through special use, it's still, any applicants who would want to do this would have to apply for that special use permit to go in front of the planning commission and then another hearing with you as well to get that approval. So that's why we decided to go with special use instead of just making it a permitted use.
So again, that was approved by your own?
Yes.
Okay. Good enough, anybody got any question? I don't suppose there's anybody here on that behalf. Okay, hearing done, uh, we'll open the floor to approval for the zoning text amendment.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll say.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next we got, uh, departmental reports. First is litter and recycling.
What do you, I didn't think you, you got written reports, I didn't think you had heard of your own report to this point.
Well, I didn't know.
Okay.
I mean, I just, they're on here.
Yeah, okay. If you own a world report.
Well, I mean, they're on here, I didn't know, I was going to get the board a chance to ask a question.
Oh, okay.
Since we do have somebody here.
I looked back and the litter board never looked at anything I was supposed to do. I just wanted to make sure.
Well, I didn't know either, but I just wanted to again make sure everybody's got a chance to ask questions.
I don't have my full degree in the...
That's fine, I mean, they've got, I mean, it's a new board, they need to, you know, see the faces and who builds what's a job and maybe they got a question.
All right. Can you give us, I mean, briefly can I ask, run down on what you do on daily basis?
For the litter or animal or...
Both.
We handle all domestic and agriculture, animal calls. Any complaint from the section on a daily basis, the litter part, we try to go around and like, uh, residential litters in our yard, dumpster diving, that's hopefully all we can focus on at this point, part of the litter. I've just recently ordered a bunch more stuff through the grant that we received for litter control to go back out this, well, the next month or so. Well, we've done a presentation last year with the school kids, and we're doing that again this year. Trying to change the tradition, we've got to start again.
So do you write tickets for scavengers?
Yeah.
Last question, do you think the ordinance is being updated?
Some of them yes. Uh, one in particular that we have is inside the dump site. If it's a trash lamp on the ground, I can issue a ticket if they're out there digging it up inside the dump site. Now, if I catch somebody actually laying it beside the dumpster, that's considered littering, but the second party coming in and picking it up and trust me, they know that I've gone over several for doing it. And I have explained to them that I'm going to try to get that changed. I'd like to see it that anything inside the bins is off limits as far as getting...
Am I wrong, but doesn't, when that stuff comes inside the gate, isn't that the property of the county being, or am I wrong on that?
I would assume, but the way the code is written, it says anything inside is acceptable.
So receptacle being as the garbage can?
Yeah. And that's why I can't, I never make it stick, it wasn't stick. That's why I said if it could just be revised, that anything inside the gates of, well, just one, that's just one. There's, there's several others that I think we just ought to make that go over the entire codes on that litter part.
Are you writing tickets to outstate vehicles pulled in, dumping their sides?
We, we've run down, matter of fact, two last week and week before last, we had complaints of Tennessee residents. It took us a while to, we actually followed them home, to be honest, they're actually Lee County residents. One in particular place is on the western end of the county, it's a trailer park. And probably fifteen out of sixteen people lives in a trailer park throughout Tennessee town, but it's in Lee County. We go up to them, you don't talk to them, well, we just haven't changed their tag yet. We see more really in the Jasper area, where it'd be Wise and Scott County Residents dumping their trash. But where we're at a hindrance, sir, is I've got to have a reasonable or probable cause to, to run a tag or even to ask for a driver license. Somebody just pulled in there with Virginia plates, don't really give me probable cause, I don't, I couldn't tell you the fix of that. But like I said, on the western end, as far as that goes, that's what gives us, you know, a little bit more teeth to it. Once we found out where these people were going, which I'm sure that there's, there are some Tennessee residents using that western end dumpster, I have no doubt. It's a half a mile from the Tennessee line, that's, that's what causes the problem.
Thank you.
Any more questions? And I can speak on the animal control as a case, and just at my house today was handled very professionally, and you know, the only thing unprofessional of me, I didn't have the proper phone number to get back over there. But they took care of that, so I appreciate it. But it's handled well.
We tried, we tried, we're a little thin right now since stealing, he's been a lot of work again. It's been rough on us since August, but we've tried to...
What is your suggestion, do you got any more?
Excuse me.
What, you got any more suggestions to remedy these problems? What would, what would you do if you had the power to do it?
As far as the litter?
Yes.
One of the biggest problems with policing the dumpsters is, is as far as us, the dumpster item. I, anytime we're out, even if we're on an animal call, I, it's just, I have, I look at a dump site, you know, if I see something, you know, I look for them. It's imp, it's gonna be impossible, even with three, even, you know, no matter how many with policing completely, you know, it's, they're just, they're spread out all the county, and I'll have to ask them to call, well, things are starting, I know you're wrong on that. It's, it's impossible to police it.
Well, my thoughts is, this is Lee County, news travels fast. I think if there could be some, some examples made, I think news travels would travel fast, that I think that there would be a, would be a big help.
I, I have written several violations as far as, if we're talking about the dump sites. Uh, one particular person, I've written three if not four times, I'm, I'm sure, I think maybe three. And, uh, they left the courtroom and two hours later, they were caught by back in the dumpster doing it again. And then what I spoke on earlier, uh, as far as talking to the school kids, the hardest part about the, not just the dumpster, but litter in particular, is we're trying to change a lifestyle. Kids grew up seeing their mom and daddy's, those parents grew up with their parents doing, it's a lifestyle change. And that is one of the biggest issues that I've been into doing with our job is, a lot of people don't see everything through the same eyes. We may see a mess, maybe they don't see that one. And that's, I know it's going to take generations, so that's why we started back. I think it's real important that we talk to our students and we had a really good turnout with them last year, and it just didn't take time.
Mike Allen. Was there any questions about solving the question, if you could, please, talk to Gary on there.
I did have one question, I'm sorry, I should have asked you when he was up here, but litter, litter and animal control, correct?
Yes.
Who you referred to?
Well, you guys, for the most part, I mean...
Don't take it wrong, but somebody has to evaluate everybody as an employee. We're not doing that obviously as a board, we take recommendations from somebody that should be evaluating you all as an employee.
Right.
So...
I, Mr. Poe will not call most of the time, but it's a legal matter as far as, you know, enforcement, culture.
I mean, Mr. Poe ain't taking care of that gun, I don't think.
Right, right.
So is it split between the sheriff, is it all the county administrator, or how's it been working?
Well...
Does it work? That's the only thing I'm asking, do we need to clarify the channels that everybody needs to take, because there's several of these positions that I've heard about, but it's a little unclear.
I would about agree. It just depends on, it just depends on what job I would do, if you say, and...
And I appreciate everything you're doing, and obviously I'm here to say, if you need anything from us, ask, I mean, we're all here, we all live here, but I think the path needs cleared up with several employees in the county that I've heard about.
Right. It's, the only thing that I would say as far as the legality part of writing sentences is, I've always felt that it would probably be better to buy answers to the sheriff on a situation like that, which he does, we have a good working relationship with him. He helps us in the way he can, and I'm constantly asking investigators and asking questions because a lot of our stuff leads into some other issues that they deal with, so it's a, there's a little bit more to it than just animals and the litter a lot of times.
More trouble. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any questions, anybody have work to grow on their report? You have questions you can ask, we'll talk to them later. We are talking to the later now.
Yeah, there's a, take up the issue of trying to use works to assist with litter controls, looking at that as closed session for personnel.
That's one reason we're going to kind of run through, you know, kind of quickly some of the stuff until, you know, it's ever been here. Okay, next on the agenda is public expression. Have you got any public expression?
I don't know if this is the time I'm supposed to speak or not, but...
Was it?
No. Anyway, um, just let y'all know, I've been living here since 2018, lived in Tennessee, and told my wife I've never moved Virginia while I've been here. So, anyway, what I'm...
I'm sorry, could you state your name and your, and your address?
Danny Brashfield, B-R-A-S-S-F-I-E-L-D. I live at 268 Markland Street, Jonesville.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Uh, what I want to discuss tonight, and I don't know if you all have thought about that, um, as you can see, we've got a mess in our southern borders, and, uh, so far I've not seen any indication we've had a problem with people coming in or anything. And the reason why I told you that, uh, I have been here since 2018, let y'all know, I have no problems with people coming in, but if they start coming in by busloads and everything like that, this is a small community. Have y'all got anything figured out? Have you got a contingency plan in case that happens? And that's what I wanted to bring up tonight. Like I said, may, may never, may never have to deal with it. I'm not seeing any indication of it yet, but be bad way around to the last minute and then find out you need some kind of plan. So that's all I've got to say, I thank you for your appreciation and your attention.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else here for vote expression? Okay, hearing done, we'll move on to approval amendments, January the 18th, 2024, regular meeting. Okay, got a motion to approve, got a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next, uh, we got county administrator reports that payroll warrants have been issued and approval of disbursements. So we're looking for a motion to pay the bills.
Make a motion to pay the bills excluding the assistant, you said?
Well, that's not a bill.
Yeah.
That, that, this just codes the disbursements from our office.
Okay, make a motion.
Okay, got a motion, got a second?
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, uh, we got delegations and, uh, first one on the list is all the presentations which we're going to be having tonight. Uh, we got a copy of the audit order for you guys to review. Next on the agenda, we got the Virginia Department of Transportation, Mr. Alan Sumter, Deputy Administrator.
Good evening, good to be here with you, this is the first time with the new board that I've been able to come to meet with you, because, um, I, um, wanted to kind of tell a little bit about myself to start with. I oversee, I'm the Residence Administrator responsible for the Wise residency, and we have four counties within our residency, those are Lee, Scott, Wise, and Dickinson. And, um, we take care of the maintenance and the land development and rural rescue construction out of my office. I am a Lee County native, uh, here in, in Lee County, and spent several years away working with VDOT, came home in 2010, spent a while as the Residence Administrator here, then I spent about three years in Abingdon, and then I came back in, uh, 2000 and, uh, might, let's see, 2022, I guess it was, I came back. So I wanted to kind of give you a little bit of an overview tonight with several of you being new, about, uh, VDOT's role and how that we kind of function to assist you and partner with you on transportation matters within Lee County. So, um, as I mentioned, um, we take care of the maintenance. In Lee County, we're divided in, uh, two parts, we have two headquarters that take care of the maintenance of the roadways. One shop is based out of Dryden, and the other one is based out of Ewing. Now, uh, as far as on the roadway, I just kind of give you a little perspective of how the border goes with that, is Ewing comes, um, on, comes up 58, uh, the dividing line is on, uh, over here on Route 70, uh, going toward the Tennessee line, uh, Route 70 is taken care of by Ewing, and everything that is west of Route 70 is taken care of by Ewing, everything that is, um, east of Route 70 is taken care of by Dryden, as far as secondary roadways. Then, uh, coming up, uh, on alternate 58 outside of town here, uh, Ewing takes care of the, um, car lane up to the school, um, where you turn, go down, uh, the road going to the, to the school, uh, Ewing takes care of that road, and then everything to the west of that, that's going that way. Uh, from the turnoff going into the school, uh, going east, uh, Dryden takes care of all of that area. So we have about 25 maintenance employees that work out of, um, those two headquarters combined, about 12, 13 in each one. Mr. Jimmy Mitchell is the superintendent of the Ewing area headquarters, and Mr. Andrew Christian is the superintendent at the Dryden area headquarters. Out of Wise, we, we take care of about nine of those headquarters like that in the four counties that we serve. So we take care of the maintenance, uh, we also take care of the land development and permits. So if anyone, like, um, when you see those dollar funeral stores that are going in and you see, they're putting in a new entrance, uh, we have reviewed that entrance and issued a permit for it. Uh, anytime that there is a driveway entrance, you're supposed to have an entrance permit, we have staff that issues those permits as well. If, um, if there's new law mark in the town, we're involved with the development of, of looking at that, approving those plans, any type of new subdivision, uh, utility plans, like if Scott County telecommunications will put in their, their cable to run the internet, we have to issue them a permit for that. Any water lines that go in, we issue permits for that as well as, um, the, the maintenance permits for them to go in and do work on those as well. Another thing that we do, I'm going to talk a little bit more in detail, um, with you about tonight, is the construction of the unpaid roads. You as the board supervisors in your positions, uh, as partners with us, are responsible along with us for developing an updated six-year improvement plan for the, for the unpaid roads and updating that every year. We typically, what we do is we come forward with you and have a public hearing, consider what roads that could be put on the plan, and then, um, we add those to the plan to update the out here. Like as an example, um, what we will be doing this year is looking to update what will be going into the construction program for fiscal year 30. That's a long ways out, but it gets here a lot quicker than what you can believe at times. So we, we have a plan in place now that we've been working off of, that, um, previous boards, Mr. Leonard being on board several times, talked with him over the years, and the, and, uh, the other members, approving rules that were put on the plan, and then we've been working on constructing those roadways. So if I could, what I want to do right now at this part is, I'm going to go over a couple of things with you, and I'm going to try to move as quickly as I can, but this being the first time here, I think it's important that I, I kind of cover these items with you.
Please.
This is a, a report that we're going to work on providing you quarterly, that kind of give a summary of where things stand in the, in the county. I always tell everybody, no reading ahead, because that's cheating. I give this to you guys. This is the last one I have. Okay, so on this report, what we kind of go over, just kind of give you a summary of what we have, have done, will be in the last three months, whenever I come to see. So we've been focused on our winter operations. We had the one big snowstorm that was presented a lot of challenges to us because it was the first biggest, big snow we've had in quite a while. And with that, the winters dropped on us. So it made it very difficult for us to try to get all that snow off the road. But it took a little while, but we got a little help from Mother Nature and got that off the roadways. Now, the next thing that we've been focused on is grading and stoning unpaved roads where needed. So one of the things, if you haven't already as board members, that you're going to see one of probably some of your most constituent calls are going to come, if you've got gravel roads in your district, from people that either the road is too muddy, or the road is washboardy, or the road is summertime, needs dust control put on it, some type of thing. The conditions of gravel road are continuously changing. So we work to adjust those. Now, coming out of the snow that we had, we had a lot of the, of the thaw, got them muddy, we got a lot of calls for, for stoning and wanting them bleached. So we've been working on trying to get those back in shape. It takes a little while. We have right around a hundred and twenty miles of unpaved roadway in Lee County. It is right around the twentieth, twenty-first most in, in the state as far as the amount of unpaved roads. We've also been working, we get the freeze thaw during the winter, so we've been having to do a lot of pothole patching. We've been working on tree trimming. We did quite a bit of work over on Route seventy, and we've been working trying to take some dead trees down. And that work is going to continue. We've, we finished up on seven, what we're going to do right now, and we've moved it to another location. But that's something that's in our work plan as a priority to this as well. Work orders. Those are a topic that we hear about quite a bit as well. That's the, when we say work orders, those are the calls that people may like enter our hotline number, the eight hundred three six seven the road, or to the email address that's on the website, and log into maintenance complaint, whether it be a stopped up ditch, pothole, dead animal in the road, or whatever. I'm going to skip to the back page, or the second page of this report, where we, and just kind of go over here. Here is a summary of in major categories of work orders that we've received for the calendar year twenty twenty-three. So you see that we had quite a bit of dead animals, work orders that were called in. We had forty-four of those, although that wasn't all the dead animals that we had. That were just forty-four that people saw and just happened to call in and make a complaint about. We have drainage complaints that come in, whether it be stopped up ditches or culverts. We had on down here vegetation, brush, tree limbs, visibility problems, potholes and so forth. In the, at the end of twenty twenty-three, we still had forty-six work orders open out of four hundred and twenty-seven. Sometimes that can be because we have to get approval for work to be done, like an environmental permission. VDOT is, is subject to the review of twenty-six other agencies, federal and state, when it comes to doing any work we do. So sometimes we might have a person that will call and say, the ditch is stopped up in front of our house. Can you not do something about it? And then we come out and look at it, and it just so happens there'll be a small stream and then just be like that wide going down that. And our environmental folks that are on staff will, they have maps and everything too, that they identify, and they'll tell us, say, this is classified as a long, a live stream. And so you're going to have to have permits on it. And so we have those types of things that we have to do, and then we have to wait in order until we get those permits cleared, in order to do the work. Now, overall, we, it, it's on average, these has taken like twenty-four days on average for us to close these work orders. Now, there's some that's taken longer, and there's some that we do know that we need to work on doing some improvement in. And that's one of the things that we are, are trying to come up with ways to try to work on as well currently through, through our office. So that is the, that's kind of a summary of the work orders that we had for last year. Now, again, when somebody contacts you, if you have, like Mr. Waddell, you're, you're in the area where my parents live. So my dad gets up one morning, he says, ditch is stopped up, and I just want to call Mr. Waddell and see what he can get done about it, because, because I want to get my son problems that day. So if, if that happens, you can always call us, make us aware, call, call our Wise office. Dane has numbers contacting me. Usually what we've done is, it's worked pretty successful that you call and tell Dane that, you know, got a problem here, and then Dane will email me. And if I don't have him on spam folder, then I'll, I'll get his email and look at it back. We pick on each other quite a bit, so I have to do that there.
Will that continue with Mr. Brass there? Okay, just as long as you're those late favorites.
Okay.
Mr. Brass will probably get better, sir.
But what we do is you can do that, if he has a number, if it's something you need to talk to us about, call. You can do that. Or again, the alternative is you can also tell the citizen that they're on either the VDOT whip thing, or that there is a one-eight-hundred number that they can call in and get a service request issued that will come to us, and then we will investigate and respond. That's what those numbers are, and those items that are on that second page when that's been done. So I go back to the first page and talk about it just a minute. One of the things that we have listed, that's been done there previous request, just kind of making y'all aware, there's a road that's within the town Pennington that they've asked us to consider putting on our payment schedule. So we've got that under review now to see whether or not it might qualify for going on payment schedule at a, at a future time. And then you see the rural rustic project update. These are projects that we've had in the last few years that, that we've worked to complete, or that we're working on in construction, or that we are in an engineering phase to go forward with in the future. So we completed Repatch Road in Mont Harless, those have been completed. Clear Springs, that's down in the western part of the county, has been completed. We, we've been working on the Klondike Road. Mr. Cox is here, he's, he keeps me on my toes with that one. We have that one listed as in progress because we had to winter it. So what we, what we do on these projects, and these are projects now, as I can go into just a, a little more detail. So we have a board of supervisors manual, and did I send that to you, that you can give to them?
I downloaded.
Okay.
If it's not-
It's a full manual. It's got all different types of information about where that you, as a board, might have questions to interact with VDOT.
Have you got it in a booklet form?
I've got it electronically.
Okay, well, I can now, I can download.
I pull excerpts out of, out of it regarding paving the roadway. So we have what is called rural rustic program. And I've referred to that several different times. So to kind of give you a little detail about that, is that the General Assembly, through legislation a few years ago, revised the way that the unpaved roads are done, to where that they allowed for like twenty-five million dollars statewide to go into the unpaved road. And so with that, the allocation is given out to all the counties in the state. And the allocation is based upon the number of vehicles that according to our traffic counts have over fifty vehicles a day, have fifty vehicles a day in the eligible, versus the entire amount of unpaved roads statewide. So again, Lee County has, let's see, I said, I believe it's like a hundred and twenty miles of unpaved roadway. So it's like a hundred and twenty miles versus the total mileage statewide. Now, as I said earlier, there with that total, the way that just kind of works out, is Lee County is like twentieth in allocations statewide, and their share out of that twenty million. So if you look, there's a page that you have that's back in here that looks like that. See that? That is the allocation each year that the Lee County receives to go toward unpaved road construction. So typically, our numbers in the, that we've been estimating off of for the last few years have been that a mile of paved road would cost around two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We're expecting that number to increase. We have seen that it's increasing already with some existing projects that, that we have ongoing, such as Klondike Road as an example. Now, the telefee money that's listed there, that is a fee that's collected from utility companies, telephone companies, that, for them being allowed to have their telephone lines on VDOT roadway. If you ever, not too many people have landline anymore, but if you look, you see, you look on your phone bill, you can see like one dollar every month that was put on there. That was money being collected to go toward this telefee that was being passed along. So and then the district grant is the number that I was talking about. That is the twenty-five million, and that's per year. So the county share, like in fiscal year twenty-five, is four hundred and seventy-seven thousand of that. This is the, this is some working draft information that we just are starting to get in. If you look at the right column there, fiscal year thirty, it says zero. And that's because we haven't received the allocations yet for this upcoming year. We're expecting to receive them within the next month or so. And then we will start working to do the update for fiscal year thirty. So here's how it works with us working together, is that we look in those out years to the board to come to us and say, we would like for you to look and see if this road qualifies. And if so, what would be a cost for it to be added into the plan? So like, you might come to us and you might say, okay, like going back to Repatch that's on the list, Papa did. Somewhere along the line for Repatch, we looked and like, okay, we'd like to get that road paved. And we said, okay, what we can do for the length of it, it's going to be three quarters of a mile to get it done. And then we did an estimate on the cost of that. Then we programmed that into, into the budget. And I'm not sure if this topic, I don't know it won't have it because it's already passed, it's on there. But these other pages that's in here for the profits that are in there details the allocation for those fiscal years to get it forward funding. So where we are right now is that, again, we are approaching the time of the year when the board is going to need to make a recommendation to us on what roads they would like to be included. Now, in the past, one of the things that made that easy was that the county had a priority listing. In other words, a list of roads that were on standby that could go onto the plan that next year without having to go through a lot of spending time to come up and scratch heads in a meeting and everything for, for the list of that. So one of the things that happened with that was that there were some years ago that there was a shortage in funds, and the six-year plan wasn't very realistic. In some counties, they had almost every unpaved road in the entire county on there, with the allocation of say a hundred or a thousand dollars. And the thing that made that attractive to the board of supervisors members is somebody calls, say, am I on the six-year plan? And they say, yes, you're on the six-year plan. Well, you're on the six-year plan, but there might be thirty other roads, and thirty roads times two hundred and fifty thousand per mile, there's no way you're going to get an allocation for that. So there was, right around two thousand and five, there was a decision that was made by the executives in central office, the enrichment, and with the governor's offices there in time, is that the six-year plan needed to be a realistic plan. It needed to be something that could be funded and built within a relatively short period of time that went on there, within a year or two. So now, when we look, and if there's an allocation of like, where it shows forget, like five hundred and seven thousand, and that drop down is just a tentative number, then we're looking at, okay, we might be able to add a couple of miles of roadways onto the plan. Now, that can mean, the most bang for your buck hits it towards, we can do like a half a mile section at a time. If a road is like a dead end, and it beats fifty cars a day, and it's only three tenths, yeah, we can do less than that. But it just kind of helps it that if it's at least a half a mile. So I don't, I think, Dane, we've exhausted all the priority list roads here in Lee County, haven't we?
Yes, that, that took from about two thousand and five, and I'm just sitting here trying to think of when we got- Yes, that took from about two thousand and five, and I was just sitting here trying to think of when we got them all cleared off. It's probably about seventeen or eighteen before we got all those projects back on the six-year plan and it was able to start adding some new ones.
So, if I can here as we lead off, kind of give you a homework assignment, so to speak, is if you will talk and you can contact us as well through Dane and you come up with a list of roads that we'd like to have as priorities to go on to the plan for future updates. And again, there is right around the hundred and twenty miles of it, so we know that there are some sections out there that still need to be built. But again, there's information here on these other pages that I provided for you. The board has to provide a resolution saying, and this is, in Lee County, we aren't going to have any roads, unpaid roads, it's going to be fifteen hundred vehicles a day. Or even up to seven hundred and fifty. Most of the maximum that I've seen is you're probably, I think, at most I've seen like two, two-hundred-and-fifty at most in the time that I've been back in this area. So again, in Loudoun County, where they have the most gravel roads in the state, they have traffic, some roads up there, they've got traffic counts like ten thousand vehicles a day on unpaid roads. So, they have to, this, this method here essentially lets the road be constructed without making it a freeway. We, we a lot of times construct it right within the easements that we have. We try to get around eighteen foot of roadway if possible, no less than sixteen feet. And we try to go in and improve the pipes, the ditches, things on it there to make it drain properly. And then we put a paved surface on it in the end. And so that's essentially what we do with our unpaid road program. So, is that pretty well covering what we've talked about?
I've got a question, just out of curiosity.
Okay.
Loudoun County, and there's a few other Northern Virginia counties, is it still the case that in those areas, because they do have a lot of unpaid roads, it's by choice of the residents? That they, that's a deterrent to traffic coming through there?
That is the case, yes, they are. So, they go through some of the various horse farms and things up there and they are, they want them to remain in the true colonial day type condition. And so they're purposely left that way. So, that's kind of a quick kind of report for you and information. And so at this time, I will be quiet and see if you've got any questions for me.
I do, of course.
Okay.
This, this doesn't plumb pertain to this, but what about Town Branch down here? Has it, that is one spot that's really, really gnar there, but has that thing ever been, anybody ever come up with the idea of making that a one-way road? I mean, am I just off the wall thinking that? But it's, it's good for trucks going toward Pennington. It's not good for trucks coming this way because it is so bad of a spot to get out down here at, on the end next to Happy Mart, but.
It's been quite a few years since I can remember the details of that study, but I think if we studied it, it would recommend you not to do that. I understand that's there with that. The speed limit was lowered, I think, twenty-five.
Thirty-five.
Yeah, thirty-five all the way through. But there is some things about, you know, creating a burden upon folks there going around different ways. And one of the things that you kind of have to watch too is if you change traffic flow there on that, then that can ultimately affect your traffic flow and your tire movements all the way up like at the bank. Safety of the counties that you're making there, for the additional traffic that's been making those.
I think that's one way, but hopefully goes back to Bill Sullivan days, it's pretty old. But that's the other issue, the first thing I thought of. If you, I understand the safety issue of pulling out on fifty-eight from Town Branch, because I do it all the time. But by the same token, you send a tractor and trailer down, five hours a day and have them make a turn, they're not going to swing it wide enough. Somebody pulled up there, they're going to have, they're going to sit there until they back up and give them room.
And does it cover the area all the way that, where you're talking, that Marist area where the creek comes up close to?
These spots there, it's just, it looks like there's plenty of room, but they just want enough pavement thrown down there and it's a.
And it would be off the roadway in order to try to do any widening or anything at this point, moving the creek, I talked about environmentally, that would be an issue. But we joke oftentimes, I've had two administrations here. My first, when I went to Evan, and then I've come back. During the first time, we did do out at the, at the end, the Walmart end, we did a little work to try to widen that out to make, help a car make a turn in there a little bit. But all the roadways and things that we require, that's, that's about as much as we were able to do right there on that road. Anything else?
I've got, I've got two things actually, one pertains to limbs cutting, cutting the gravel road. But a limb cutting, mentioned Scott County telephone running their fiber. So they put up a few poles, they've not, they've not finished yet, all the way from Keel to that pledge. And I kind of noticed that every pole's almost beside a tree. So they're going to be doing a lot of cutting as far as limb cut, just to run their line from pole to pole. Is there any way, I know there are that in between those places, there's a lot of dead overhang and stuff like that, that you often work in conjunction with them to, to get some of that taken care of?
We could try, but that usually doesn't work too well either. They're in there on the mission to get their poles in and put them in.
Well, they don't got the poles, it's just a matter of going to cut the limb.
Yeah, they, they will go through and we usually try to get them to put them on the roadway lines if at all possible. So back behind the ditches and everything, out of clear zones and so forth. But once they get to that point, we don't have much control over how much they're laying out and whatever to get their lines in.
Well, I understand that, I'm just saying, working with them to get some more limbs out between the poles that, that they wouldn't have to necessarily do for their line, but it would be necessary to keep them hanging out over the road.
We could ask, but I don't know with them, if their budget, whether or not they would be receptive to that or not.
Okay, and on the other question, I think last year, I think it was last year, we might have brought it up as a board to get some information for, for the gravel roads per district. Because I'd almost bet that most supervisors in here, because I don't know myself, I've been a supervisor for eight years now, and I don't know ever gravel road in my district. Do a lot of them, but I think we were kind of wanting to get an idea, get a, get a list of each gravel road that's in our, that pertains to our district. So we could actually go out and look at the ones because.
Okay, we, I've forgotten that myself, but we can work on trying to get that. It may take just a little bit, but we'll try to get that as soon as we possibly can. One of the things that, as far as timeframe too, that we probably, we need to be going to like a public hearing on them, which we're required to have a public hearing for the plan in May. So we've got probably, I, like I said, I haven't got my number yet, but they always give us a very tight window to get them approved. So probably May, June at the latest. So, I will see what we can do. Our system typically isn't set up, it's, like I said, I can look at it easily and from one headquarters to the other. But on the magisterial districts, I'm not sure if you've got something, you can, we make sure that, I don't know how we could go about that together.
And one of the reasons I ask this too, is a fact that like, and it may be where you guys can work with us, you know, as far as difficulty in you all maintaining the gravel road as far as scraping in the winter or something like that. And it might be beneficial, like one road we might come up with, and you guys might think, well, this one here, we might come up with two roads that, you know, we'd like on the list. But one of them might be a little bit more difficult for you all as far as to work on that you, I know you've done that with me and Pies to help me, but.
And one thing that I'm glad you mentioned that that I forgot to mention with our funds, the way that we're set up, because we will, I've had this question come before in other locations. It's like, okay, you are, you're paving on about six oh six, and you're repaving that, and why are you doing that when this road has never been paved? Can't you take that money and then go down here and pave? Our monies are set up legislatively separately. We cannot take maintenance money and use it to build unpaid road. And we can't take unpaid road money and then maintain one of the roads that's already paved. And then we have like safety monies that are like case by case type situation that comes in like for, that compete for statewide is like for guardrails, different things like that. And those are like separate funds as well too, that you could take that and use that to build sections of unpaid road.
Well, I know all that, but that wasn't what I was pertaining to. I was pertaining to, what I was pertaining to is you all could have some influence on by, you know, just your knowledge of what you have to do with that road. To see if it's, one might be a little more beneficial if they were on the list.
We'll, we'll see what we can do. If I don't have the districts today or whatever, then I will give it to you and then see what we can.
What I think, and this might be a good project for Mr. Wright, that they have a database online that you can pull up. It shows unpaid roads in your calendar, it shows all the segments. What you have to do then is take those segments and match it to what district it's in. And with the GIS map, he should be able to get that pretty close. It'll take a little while to do that, but I think concentrate the time on, he could probably come up with that.
Well, I think it would be very helpful. When I first came on board, I would like to have had something like that, but you just have to depend on people coming to you and saying, well, my road needs it worse than this road does.
Well, and that database also shows the traffic count, so it immediately tells you how much traffic's on that road on a daily basis. So that's a good number to have too, when you're looking at prioritizing which ones to try to, to get in there. So, we'll see if we can work on that.
The one, one other item as far as out of that funding that we also, that we get asked a lot about here in Lee County is roads that are not in the system. And there are mains that you can place like that, that number that's the four-hundred-and-fifty or five-hundred thousand per year. You can allocate five percent of that for rural additions, roads in on end, and then accrue those funds to then bring them into the system. The difficulty in that, that's a program that was really kind of set up back when there was once upon a time that counties were getting three, four million dollars, five, six million dollars per year in their construction program. And five percent would lead to within a couple of years that you could have enough funds to be able to, you know, build a road and then take it up back into the system. And we talked about roads, they have to be at least twenty years in existence with no developer interest on still remaining on those. The problem with that now is you accept the five percent side, you're talking twenty, twenty thousand dollars. And if you're saying that the same cost is going to be two-hundred-and-fifty, two-hundred-and-sixty thousand per year, then you're talking thirteen, fifteen years before you ever get enough money in order to construct one of those. And there are other programs that are, that are there such as like revenue sharing that a county can apply for. Of course, that's where that, you know, the county would say, okay, well, we found in our budget two, you know, hundred-and-twenty-five thousand. And then state will then, if it's approved, match the other hundred-and-twenty-five and build them quicker than that. And a lot of counties, what they do when they really get somebody really pressing hard for those is they, like Washington County that, where I was working before I came back. It's the ugly T word that people don't like to hear, they would create a tax, a special tax for those. And so the homeowners that were in there, they would be set up for like on their real estate taxes or something that they would get, you know, a fee added to theirs for so many years to pay that back for the revenue sharing match. It gets it done, whereas otherwise it, you know, wouldn't have, probably had them, you know, before. But that's just some things out there. If you've got more questions about any of this, say, I've been doing this a long time, so I've got, it's accumulating so much, it pushed my hair right out of my head. Any more questions?
Mr. Stewart, I've got a couple, if I can, let me up there. You've got on your schedule on this first page on this rural restic, you've got Thomas Walker Interstate. Is that the project that was approved under smart standard?
That is, that project.
Will that be done sooner than six years since?
Yes.
Okay, I was just curious, because I was assuming it would be done.
That should really just say project updates, but that is, that project has been funded and we're in the environmental review stage of that. I'm expecting that that possibly could be constructed by next year.
Mr. Stewart, well, for your information, that's what, when you come across in front of the light diamond there or whatever it is, that offset to get up?
Yeah, we had to vote on it in the school, that board meeting.
Okay, all right, so that's, that's that project.
I didn't know what he was going to have.
Trying to straighten it out. So, the other question I had, since you're growing up.
Speaking of name there too.
Okay, yeah, in front of the school, it's an issue of the potential on lowering the speed limit, right in front of the school.
It's fifty-five.
Issue to look at there, because it opens back up to fifty-five coming out of Ewing, and stays fifty-five all the way to Rose Hill.
Okay, if you can just send me something with the, with the exact limits of where you'd like for it to be studied at, then we will, we'll get it looked at, okay?
Okay, okay. Another question I was going to ask, I was going to email you on this, and you just go be here now. If you want to go into detail later in the week, that's fine, but Senator Valero, the board voted on that last spring. I don't know who dropped what, but.
That's one that Joey's worked on, I'll, I'll need to get an update from him and I'll email you the update.
Okay, all right, all right, I appreciate, because I get asked about it really frequently, so.
Anything else? Let's get, get this settled out again, if, that is, if you want me to, I will, I'll be glad I can come back like in three months, maybe quarterly visit. That's something that you all have liked to have done. And of course, I'll have to come back for the six-year plan here, but that's just something I'll probably do. And if you have any other issues or whatever, you can just.
Six-year plan here.
Well, it will either be, as of right now, based on what I know, the leader had it usually denied at your board meeting, like on whatever your day is in May or in June. That's what I anticipated this time.
So we need to get our homework done on the roads with you?
Yes. Yes. Actually, we need that really in about another, probably this is February by the end, middle of April, so that we can have everything in place so that we'll come to the hearing knowing what roads that we want to try to add.
Okay, well, I guess, one other thing, while you're, what is, how is things coming along while taking over new roads? Any of that happening much?
That's what I was talking about, that rural addition process. That's what I was talking about when I said that the 5% that you, roads that are not in the system now.
No, I was meaning like through a subdivision that haven't been, are you all doing any new roads?
That's the process that I was talking about. Okay. If it's a subdivision, it has to have been in existence for at least 20 years. And there's two ways it could happen. One's either that it be funded like I mentioned before, and it's gonna take a long time, or you just do the 5% or the revenue sharing. Or then it can be done like a subdivision, like a developer, where either the developer or citizens pay to do the improvements and then we will take it in then after that. That's really, that's by code, that's the only ways that they can come in if they're not in the system already.
And Mr. White, there's this state legislation that was passed a few years ago. It requires if a subdivision is developed without paved streets, without VDOT approved, they paved streets. And that's, it's, it's an incentive to try and get developers to go ahead and pave the streets up to VDOT standards and get them into the state system as soon as they have three, basically three lots sold. They can get in, brought into the system, has to have three homes. If they choose as developer to create that subdivision and not improve the streets to pavement, to VDOT standards, they have to put a deed notation in each and every deed that they sell in there that it is, that that street is not maintained, state maintained, and will not be eligible for state maintenance. And there's some in the county that have that statement in the deeds. People overlook it because they, it's just not something they read. It's now toward near the end of the deed and they don't look at it. And then they'll call years later and say, we want to rotate and if you look back at it and get your deed, because it's terrible.
Because what happens so bad is we're reaching a point that people, they would develop or just go in and develop them and didn't care really how they, you know, what quality of construction they did. And go and then, you know, won't VDOT come back in and in the bag in order to be able responsibly to get into state maintenance. Okay, as we did this, if y'all, if you have any questions or anything, then I'll be glad trying to help you all.
Thank you. Okay, next we've got promise program, Dr. Andy Gruber.
Good evening. Happy to be with you all tonight. I'm not qualified, I'm not Dr. Westover, our president. It can be, you can tonight, she's in the room. I hold off so fast. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have. And I've given you a PowerPoint presentation with my numbers on it. I don't know how simple five is, so I can go through it very quickly. I did have some good news to report for Lee County tonight. So just an update on our enrollment for community college. As you know, we serve Lee, Scott, Wise, Fortuna, Dixie, and the city of Norton. We have about 1,400 full-time students, a little over 3,000 part-time students. And we're about the same size as Virginia Highlands Community College. So there's 23 community colleges and we're, of course, certainly far at the southwestern end of the state. For fall of 2023, they actually had a 10% enrollment growth. That is the number, if you look on that second page, the fall 2023 point in time FTE enrollments, about the fifth column over, there's a 10.09 change in our FTE. Basically, what that means is that we had a double-digit enrollment increase for the first time. I've been with Mountain Empire for about 12 years. I can't remember ever having in my 12 years, a double-digit enrollment increase for this semester. And that continued throughout the year. There's a couple of different reasons that, you know, I would suggest may be the cause for that. But we were only one of three community colleges out of the 23 in Virginia that had that, that increase, an increase at all, let alone a double-digit increase. So we're really, really proud of that. We ended, if you look at that third page, of course, we have a majority of our students, about 61% are female, 38% male. And the overwhelming majority are in a career technical program at Mountain Empire. Of course, you can still come to us and complete your first two years for a four-year transfer degree. We do that at a lower rate than most four-year colleges. If you turn to the page that has the fall of 2023 enrollment right now, these are all of the programs that are offered at Mountain Empire. And there's a lot of them. But as you can see, Health Science is our most popular program with the highest enrollment. We have about 374 students in our arts and sciences, which is usually our transfer programs. About one-third of our total enrollment is dual enrollment, which means high school students that are taking college credit coursework in high school, whether it's on campus or in their high school classroom. So that makes up a large portion of our enrollment. And then we also, of course, offer classes in industrial tech and business technology. If you come on, our spring enrollment also maintained that same increase. I've got a little update. If you look, I think it's on the spring 2024 point in time, we've updated that since we've been in our numbers. We still have a 10% increase in our enrollment overall from the spring of last year. Usually we laser piece students from fall to spring, but we kept that enrollment out. So we're very happy about that. And then one of the most important things I want to mention is that not only is our enrollment, but the number of classes that students are taking has increased. And you can see that in that spring 2024 point in time credit hours. It's gone up by about one credit hour. What that means for a student is if they're completing more classes, say they are enrolled full-time and they take 15 credit hours instead of 12 credit hours, they'll finish quicker. And that's what we want. We want students to be able to finish on time and go out and get their job. So that's important. So if they usually drop part-time, it will take them a little bit longer and we run the risk of losing them if they don't complete on time. So last year, we came to you with an idea to start a promise program. And you may already be familiar with the Tennessee Promise. In Tennessee, if you graduate from high school, you'll go to a two-year college for free. And then if you're an adult and you want to return to school, you can also return to school tuition-free as an adult in Tennessee. That's paid for through their state government. Virginia has not done that yet, but we know that our students need to compete for the jobs that are in our area. And they're competing with Tennessee students for jobs locally. So our portion of the state lags behind the overall college educational attainment rate and the rest of the state by about 20%. Only about half of our residents obtain a college degree of any sort, two-year, four-year. And the state average is about 70. So in order for us to be economically competitive with the rest of the state, we need to make sure that our students are not only prepared, once they graduate from high school to enter the workforce, they need to have some skill set. And that doesn't necessarily have to be a two-year degree. Our Power Line Man program, which is one of our most popular programs, it's only a 15-week course that students can take and they graduate from that and can go on to make 40 to 60,000 depending on where they start at per year, which is a pretty big salary for a 15-week training program. So we do offer the short-term training programs, programs that last for six months, 12 months, and 24 months. So we came to you last year and said we have this idea to start a promise program in our region. Other community college regions have something similar, but they don't offer that for every high school graduate in their service region. Our community college was committed to doing that for our students and we have a pretty healthy foundation that provides scholarships for students. We also asked for a, and received a $750,000 grant from the Jim and Foundation in Charlottesville, Virginia, to start a promise program that would be free tuition coverage for high school graduates in our service region. And then we came to each local board of supervisors and said, we have this gift. We need to put it in the bank and let it gain interest for a while so we can continue and do this forever and ever. Could you support a small donation to start this program? Lee County provided $40,000 and we reached that $40,000 mail and asked for that mail because that was the gap that we knew students who were coming to us between what they were receiving in federal and state financial aid and what they were paying out of pocket. So for all of your students, over a three-year average, the latest data that we have, your students were paying about $40,000 out of pocket. Okay? So that's, you all were grateful, or we were grateful. You all were very generous in appropriating $40,000 for that program. And so this year, we did have a little bit of an increase. I've got the, the information on the promise program included in here. To be eligible as a high school graduate, you have to maintain a 2.0 GPA. That's like bottom run GPA, right? You have to be continuously enrolled up to two years. And what that means is you can't take a year off. You can't, you know, take a break year or a gap year. You have to enroll. If you graduate in the spring, enroll in college either in the summer or fall for that to count. You must reside in the service area. That's an issue for maybe Scott County really, because they have some Tennessee students that are enrolled at Cape City High School. So we can't provide to Tennessee residents. You have to complete a federal financial aid application and you have to complete a scholarship application. This is a last dollar scholarship for tuition only. So does not cover books, does not cover, they don't get a refund for this. It only covers tuition. So we had, in 2022, you had about 50 students from Lee County that were attending Mountain Empire. We had 45 students attending this year. I think there was a little bit of a population decrease between two years of how to be graduating class. At Lee High, 23 out of 35 were eligible for the promise program. And at Thomas Walker, six out of 10 were eligible. That may not mean that they did not receive full tuition scholarship. It just means that maybe they didn't turn in their federal financial aid on time or didn't complete a scholarship application, only that. So we may still have been able to cover them. Already, in the, since the fall of 2023, we've had three students earn a certificate or a degree in that time period out of these promise students. We're looking at the high school predicted graduating class for Lee County next year and we expect lower numbers, 25 from Lee High and maybe eight from Thomas Walker that will qualify. I'd like to see those numbers go up. I'm not sure that every student at Lee High, Thomas Walker knows that they can come to Mountain Empire for free. We have counselors that work there at Lee High. I personally went to the school board office and talked to principals about the program. So I'm, I hope that students know that they have the option to attend college for at no cost. And if you know of students that don't know, please, we'll come out and talk to schools and talk to parents as well. So out of that $40,000 that we asked for you, we didn't spend any of it this year. We were able to cover everyone of our students through private scholarships that we already had established. You may be familiar, we have a Lee County endowed scholarship that we've raised money for for several years. We're continuing to raise money for that. We have some other scholarships that are dedicated for Lee County students only. And then most of those students qualify for federal financial aid. What we worry about is that students don't even know what they qualify for because they don't even bother to fill out the application or their parents don't push them to do that. But most will probably qualify to go to school for free if they just complete the paperwork to do that. And that's not through Mountain Empire, that's through the federal government. So, you know, I should be coming to you asking for more money to complete a second year of students. You'll have a new graduating class in 2024 that will be coming. They're eligible for promise. And then we're also supporting the students that were, that are still enrolled, that came to us in 2023. But because we didn't need to spend your money this year, we're gonna keep that for a second year, if that's okay? And see if we can support a second year of students in this program. So I hope it's been successful. I think it has. Certainly it's contributed to an enrollment increase. I think sometimes our students will come and they find out that, hey, I can go to college for free and their parents become interested in maybe going back and completing some training to get a better job. I'm happy to answer any questions you have. I think we've got a really great partnership with our Lee County schools. And I'm happy that we've been able to provide that for our students. We're the only region in the state that is guaranteeing free tuition for every high school graduate. That's wonderful and something that should be committed. Thank you all very much.
Does it include, does it have another dual credit basis in that process?
It doesn't. I wish it did.
About books?
It does not include books, no. There is an argument, and I've heard that students need to have some skin in the game. And I think they do have skin in the game. They're getting class, they're getting the work, but books.
Well, that skin's coming off the tires. My daughter actually goes to, to Mountain Empire and I think God's counselors failed to tell her about it.
That's unfortunate. That's unfortunate.
We found that a little bit, but I'm glad she did. I'm glad she did.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, next we've got the SMARTSKILL application, Terry Talks.
Mr. Chairman and the board, thank you for letting me speak for a few minutes. My name is Terry Talks, eight ninety-five Kangap Road, Duff Field, Stequaville area. And I'm here to talk about the extension of the Eastbound Lane, US 58, that's Stequaville towards Duff Field. We have a major traffic going across it, all of Lee County's advanced healthcare, our jobs and our social activities go across this, and we have two large rock quarries that are, Holland Rock over into Kingsport and Johnson City, where it's booming. I was in Johnson City last week and saw Woodway Stone at the Boons Creek exit. Glass constructions coming across the mountain head in Kingsport, Thomas Construction from Johnson City getting stone. We got the federal prison in between there, and we got Duff Field. The first section of the project scored extremely high on the SMARTSKILL program. It was number three only, the eighty-one corridor and the Weber City corridor scored higher, and our solid waste goes across there, our trucks for that, our emergency vehicles, and we need to turn that in and get a score and get it on the six-year plan. It would benefit all the citizens. Our school buses go back to the rest of our state, that's how they travel, and to their activities, and we need to get it done. And I wanna show you a project. I've got relatives that live in the Danville, Virginia area, and I go this direction about a half a dozen times a year, and it's the third most expensive project that Virginia has done, transportation, seven-point-four miles from Stewart to the top of Glover's Leap, twenty-nine-hundred-and-fifty feet. They're moving ten million cubic yards of earth, four land and a road, and I wanna show you this. I want you to look at these pictures, if you would, please. Take it there. If they can do this, we can get another thousand to two thousand feet down that mountain and help our citizens. And I appreciate what you do through this, citizens, and your public service and your time to do this job. It's a tough job, and let's get it done. President Kennedy said we don't do things that are easy, we do things that are difficult, and we can really make a difference in a lot of people's lives. We've got nurses, our wives, and men now to nurses, going to these major hospitals and driving back to Lee County and so forth, and let's just, please get, turn the application in, let's get it scored. It'll score high, like the first one did, three out of the whole Bristol District from Whipple to Cowan Gap. Thank you, and I appreciate your service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we got.
The board's considered taking up a personnel issue with the, with the.
Yeah, certainly.
Backrivers that are here and get that cleared out, maybe select.
Certainly.
I don't know, they're sitting there on their phone, kind of. And I hate to have to go into closed session with people from the public still here, but if we could move that one along and then get back to the regular business again, I think they would appreciate it, Terry.
Just on the personnel, that's the only one.
Yes, we can deal with the rest of those things I've got later, but I'd just like to do it out here for now.
Okay, good, good, yeah. Motion to go into closed session under one, personnel, two dot two dash three seven one one eight one.
Wait, motion.
Got a motion at seven, all the paper?
Uh-uh.